If you wanna look after your wife.
Any change in Springfield?
Well, she's come home.
Oh, she has?
Yeah, I've been. She's right out of the woods.
Yeah. Can she have visitors?
Sure.
Okay, well, I saw Pat Ray one day last week and Pat said that she went up to the hospital and was told that she couldn't have visitors.
Really? Well, she certainly can at home, so.
Okay.
You know the address?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been there.
I have no problem with it. I have no problem with it. I believe that any citizen should have the right to say whatever they feel.
It's too, it's too hot, I'll tell you that.
Do what?
It's too hot, I'll tell you.
Let me tell you what you can do. I understand that you can volunteer and get yourself dunked with ice water.
Yep, that's true.
That will cool you off for a short time.
I've already done that once, I actually did it twice, I dunked into a swimming pool a few months ago in the winter.
I've done that.
For another thing.
I used to, when I had a pool, I used to close it up that way.
Sure.
It was cold.
Yeah.
Swim across it one time and get out.
Eric said you were a big help, I appreciate it.
That's all right, I just kinda, whatever one has to do with, I don't think we got time to tell you.
There's the computer guru. Tell me how we're getting all these.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, emails.
You mean all the spam?
Spam, oh, that's sight.
Yeah, it is true. The filter's not working at all.
No, the, we don't have a filter right now. They let it go in twelve, we've been routing everything through a firewall, but it's just so much too much, so we gotta buy a filter.
I had forty-four one day.
Yeah, yeah.
The phone don't stop.
Is there any way that you can eliminate, punch them all out at one time?
No, because it's.
Yeah, I figured that.
No, it's, we've gotta actually file a lawsuit for it. Which you'll be seeing here.
So I might go into my junk email box, I'll have six or eight a day in there, but I'll have twice that.
I'll have twenty, thirty, forty, fifty a day.
Yeah.
And it's just hardware, we're, we're doing demos now to see which ones cheapest and most efficient for a small city versus spending eight thousand dollars on one.
Evening Esther, Randy?
Hello.
And the thing is, we're still on exactly the same calendar difference and then we're just taking half day, um, PD days instead of full days.
Oh.
So we, that's how we made the whole thing up.
Okay.
Without even adding anything.
How are you doing?
How are you?
Good.
I'm here.
I met one of your, uh, fellow employees the other day.
Oh, which?
Josie Long.
Oh, Josie?
Yeah.
Yeah, she's our school nurse.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, she took a, uh, she took our, um, exchange student with her, in hers to Johnson shot, Junk- Johnson shot.
Uh.
For me to say, uh, over the weekend.
You have a, um, exchange student? Where's yours from?
Ukraine.
Oh, so, okay, did they, does she, is she dark headed? Are there, are there, are there more than one, I mean, more than, is it three? Okay, 'cause two of them, who, who's the, oh, the other one's with Dearborn. Dearborn, that's who it was with, 'cause I was like, yeah, 'cause my, my grandson was telling me that, and he has class with Diana, and, um, was telling me that, yeah, they both wrote, and they were sitting there talking in Russian the whole time. So you, I didn't know you had one too, oh, that's great. And I just saw that they, Eric had put on Facebook, they need a home for a third one, but she's from somewhere else. Or a fourth one. Um, Tez, I don't wanna say. Yeah, yeah. But yeah, Josie's pretty cool. She's already planning a mark, a spring break for her. So was he.
Yep, yep. And we, we were aware of it, we were talking about it.
So, why would we spend thirty-five thousand dollars to do it right now when this is only three years old?
I don't know.
It's, uh, it's.
Hi, Randy.
I'd like you to pronounce as a Koch, K-O-C-H. Frank, K-O-C-H.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I know how it's spelled. I was laboring on the pronunciation.
Well, everybody has. I have seen it pronounced Cook.
She and Betty are gonna make a good.
Seems like.
Good.
Okay. Did everybody else get forty-two drops of rain?
Oh, I didn't even get forty-two, just.
We did, forty-two.
Coming home from school, big ones, like this big, like eight of them, and then it was gone. It was like, okay, was that really raining? No.
I, I went out to get in my car and it started to sprinkle and I dropped a darling hint, and it made those big fat drops, however long it took me, two minutes.
Yeah.
Done.
And then it was gone.
Pulled back in my driveway, and ten more fell.
You have a nice colored one.
These, these were laying there.
Oh, I, I had already colored, colored pencils, 'cause I couldn't.
I wanted the official.
If you get the calls on mine, I'll be.
Oh, no, that's, mine's, I copied it right off of there.
I'm sorry.
Grisham Lane.
On Grisham Lane, September.
Gonna be paved in September. They were beating me up, they're not getting it done, now they're beating me up to not having it done. There's an all win situation.
Oh, goodness.
Oh, my.
This all came together very, very suddenly. I've talked to him for a year.
Well, you're both wrong.
You think green's best?
You're both wrong.
Oh, yeah, we are, aren't we?
Well, I'm, he, I wasn't taking much, he could have won.
We were, we were taking, taking bets on what color you're.
How are you doing?
Are you?
How are you doing? He wants, he deserves more color.
How you feeling about that?
Well, oh, I still think about that. I still like, better, 'cause it's been a while now, we have to think about that.
Which one, oh, here?
Yeah.
Are you worried about that, Dan?
Okay.
I've told them one time they could take it up to the upper end, if they're gonna take it out, I don't worry about it.
Although we're girls, we always are thinking about.
Girls can kinda get away with it. Don't take that.
Let's see. Yeah.
Well, you know what they say about TV, it adds ten pounds, blah, blah.
Hooray, hooray. And I have on glasses, and they, those reflect the lights, so that's bad. So I either have to read, have to be able to read what we're doing, or go with vanity.
So I, I lose, or we lose, two hundred people.
I might get a few texts, we're reading the meeting, only because Kohl's playing the ball, so I wanna know how it's going.
I tell you, this is what's gonna get you sued. If anybody's worried about.
But it will be on time.
Yeah.
They're starting it late, actually, 'cause the heat.
Has gotten silly.
Otherwise I would've been able to go.
Jim Riley. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, he, he's been active, it's purely been the.
Okay, why is that, why can't we?
It shouldn't, pardon? Well, that's where. Mm-hmm. And, you know, you look at that, there's, it's a cycle. You'll get hurt on that one.
See, I didn't.
But you're, you know, you compare the two, there's no reason for that to be out there. You know, that, that violates every geographic rule. There's three hundred and forty people in that square right there.
I brought Randy and Esther's seat, I thought.
I had not.
But are you making decisions based on one person? 'Cause I was just looking at.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, if you're afraid of the lawsuit, there's nobody else.
That's not the person that told me they would sue if we didn't do this. I mean, I, but, but, of course, I didn't know.
Well, here they are. They're in my pocket. Here's your reserve.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, I think I've paid for my. I appreciate your delivery. We had to go, we had to go South Dakota, so we missed.
She made deliveries and wrong, probably.
I'll double check.
Oh, thank you.
'Cause she's a very, you know, with the Morris. Roger and. Yeah. We're behind, we're behind them. Okay, I'll have to step in check.
I suspect.
I'll text him.
I don't, I'm, I saw a Ken football game Friday night, but I didn't get the.
I was wondering, I meant to call him today and ask him.
Have you heard anything about the?
Well, I called John, I didn't even know. He's suspected it's over, like Elliot.
Yeah, that's, that's my expectation.
He was against it.
Yeah, Ken and John, they've been along very well.
Um, John said, Ken and James.
Ken and.
Ken and James.
Oh, probably.
Not get.
Well, you know, I'm sure both of them had strong feelings and they were opposite feelings, so. But, you know, we wouldn't have anybody up here, but every time you lost an argument, uh.
It was on.
You were signed.
Well, maybe, you know, some people just aren't cut out for that kind of, um, decision-making.
Well, I still remain open for nomination. I'm talking about.
I was thinking about it, and I just come up with.
Well, mine says seven ten, but it's fast.
It's fast.
Six fifty-eight.
Well, I watched us seven o'clock.
Again, we have a variety of times up here, I'm sure it's seven o'clock somewhere. So I'd like to welcome all of you to tonight's city council meeting. We'll open, as always, with a roll call, invocation, and pledge of allegiance.
Herny.
Here.
Suter.
Here.
Crabtree.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. The invocation will be offered by the Reverend Don Anderson tonight.
Let's bow our heads for prayer. Our most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come to you tonight, we are so thankful for your blessings upon our city. And father, we thank you for the rain that we received today, and tonight, we just ask your blessings upon this meeting. Father, that you would give our councilmen, those who we have elected, uh, the courage and the strength and the wisdom to make the decisions that they need to. Father, that, uh, they would act in the best interests of, of the community. And father, we pray also that you would protect those who are out serving our community tonight, keep them safe. Thank you for our leaders, thank you for those who serve us, and father, we ask your blessings upon this meeting. Tonight, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Anderson, we really appreciate your efforts. We'll begin with public comments, and we are going to have a public hearing tonight on, uh, redistricting and on, uh, electric rates. So if you have something that you'd like to talk to, about on some subject other than those two, uh, feel free to come up. I'll start on this side and work back. Anybody over there have something they want to say? Yes?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Donald Bowles. On May thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, I went to work at the Lackley County Sheriff's Department. I was attacked, beaten, and injured by Gerald Jacoby. This man threatened to hunt me down and kill me. The sheriff's department, without my knowledge, let him out of jail. He attempted to get a gun at a local pawn shop here and drove his car through it. I was never informed, I never got a dime, nothing, from the sheriff's department. I got severely injured in my shoulder. I ended up having four hours of surgery done at the VA Hospital in Columbia because of this man. I lost my job because of this man. I have nothing coming into me. I would like to know why it is that this sheriff's department got away with not protecting me, not only as an employee of this city and this county, but got away with covering it up, and that was under Sheriff Wrinkle.
All right, uh, it was under Sheriff?
Wrinkle.
Okay.
And Doc, and the new sheriff won't talk to me at all. He will not talk to me, period.
Well, I'd suspect that the county commission would, and they're the ones that are responsible for the sheriff's department. So I'd suggest that you talk to them. This body has no control or, or in any fashion with regard to the sheriff's office.
Your husband, matter of fact, ma'am, did the surgery on my left shoulder, and the right shoulder, the sheriff's department and the people from Workman's Comp couldn't make up a decision on how they were gonna pay for it, and your husband wasn't able to do the surgery, and I had to go through the VA to have that surgery done. He tore my bicep muscle, my rotor cuff, and tears in the upper part of my shoulder. This is the same man who injured other people in this town, who is now in prison, my understanding is, in Illinois. For what he did to these, to this pawn shop and to other folks. It wasn't for what he done to me, and I'm very disappointed that I didn't get the justice that I deserved. I should've been informed, so I could've gone to the trial and had an opportunity to have my say, and I was never given that opportunity. He was taken by the feds and taken and put up in Camden County, out of the sight of these folks down here. That was wrong, in my opinion. I'm asking for help. I've got nothing. I get nothing from the state, I've got nothing from the government. This, the Attorney General's Office in Sa- uh, Jefferson City said they would not speak to me about it because it was not of their doing. Really, they are the ones who oversee the people who do law in this state, and yet they refuse to protect me as a citizen of this town and a person who worked for you all, to protect you from pieces of crud like that implied. I'm asking for help, and I can't get it, and I don't understand why.
And have you talked to the county commission?
I have talked to John Morse, and John Morse couldn't do much for me at all.
Well.
This man's changed my life, sir. I've been out of work for over three years, not of my own doing. I just had another major surgery done to this hand here, and I don't know what's gonna become of me later on. This thing could take over a year to heal.
Now, again, this body has no control over anything relating to your situation, but if you will call me in my office, I'll make a suggestion to you.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate it.
Anybody else on the right? Next item on the agenda.
Oh.
Doris Boyd, four nineteen, Palmer Lane. Since you don't want comment on the electric rate on this part, I'll have to reserve that for later. But I do have some comments regarding the income from the pool and the pool restoration. I understand that all income from the pool is retained by the YMCA. If that's the case, should they not be responsible for part of the maintenance and upkeep of the pool? And if the taxpayer's money is used for that purpose, should not the taxpayer be permitted to use a pool without paying additional fees? It seems like the current administration has one agenda in their mind, and that's spend, spend, spend. It's easy to spend money that you don't earn yourself. For our administration who has inflated budgets, inflated salaries, why does not the average taxpayer have some say? Why don't you listen to us? I just want justice to prevail.
Thank you, Doris. Anybody else? And we'll move to discussions and presentations of which there are none, and from there, to approval of amendments.
Second.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
And approval of the financial report.
Most approve.
Excuse me, it's the warrants, mayor.
Warrants.
Warrants are next.
Oh, yeah, all right. We'll deal with approval of warrants. Does anybody have any questions about specific warrants? Have a motion.
Most approve.
Second. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
And now financials. So moved.
Second. Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Now we're ready to move to public hearings. We'll have, uh, public hearings on new ward boundaries and on electric rates. I'd like to have motion if we go into that session.
Second. Is this gonna be two separate ones or?
They'll both be, there'll be one public hearing on two subjects.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Now, we will start with the new ward boundaries and move from there to electric rates. Is there anybody here that wants to address the ward boundaries?
My name's Bill Rook, I live at fifteen twenty-four Tecary Street. I'm standing in support of Exhibit A, uh, that we have a map of up there. I'm, uh, uh, in my view, I think, especially my ward too, needs to stay intact as much as possible. I understand the need that the warrants need to be more equal in size as far as residents go. I think, more importantly, they should be that way, vice area or acreage. Yeah, basically, you know, instead of going on and on about this, I stand in support though of Exhibit A. I'd like for everyone to consider that. Uh, B, Exhibit B just appears to me like it's kind of a manipulation. You know, in reference to past and present council members, I, I just don't see where we need to be shifting people around if that was intentional or not. You know, so I stand in support of Exhibit A. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else on this side? Is there anybody over here that would like to speak to, uh, ward realignment? Then we'll move to, uh, electric rates, and I'll start at the back row on the right. Would you?
Five percent of the last ninety-five percent, there's a five percent increase of what they feel that needs to be cleaned on what they call clean coal. How much is that clean coal that the EPA is enforcing now going to cause the electric rates in this town to go up?
Well, that's not determined right now because it's not been exposed, but, uh, they aren't gonna go down.
And will the EPA get themselves involved in trying to shut down Lackley Electric because they use coal power instead of using what they want?
That's can, that's a, a matter of concern for this body, and it's a matter of concern for the business people at Lackley Electric also.
Do you have any idea, sir, how much the rate will go up?
Outside of big political transformation, I don't have any ideas. Anybody else?
I can't understand the proposed need for up to twenty percent increase in my electric rate. I attended the Lackley Electric Meeting Friday, and they have announced no increases this year. So apparently, their administration is more capable of managing their income and expenses than our city administration. They cover a much larger area than the city of Lebanon, therefore, they are evidently managing better than Lebanon is. Why require a larger percentage from the residential than the larger businesses? Probably at least half of Lebanon's population is on a fixed income. If we are fortunate enough to receive a one percent increase in our social security, that's not very much according to that twenty percent increase in my electric rate. Why doesn't it equal, let's give equality to all persons?
Anybody else on the subject of electric rates?
Second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Now we'll move to ordinances, there being no second readings. We'll move to Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-two, which is an annual thing that we do for the Ethics Commission, says that we don't do business with the city.
Second.
Second.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Move on, second.
Second, second.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-two is approved and has become ordinance fifty-two forty-six. Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-three deals with the final plat, one twenty-seven commercial subdivision, which has been approved by planning its own. Go ahead.
Uh, this is the Lebanon Cycle Center next to Neil Twerner Motors on Evergreen Parkway. And it's a two lot subdivision and like the mayor said, it was approved by planning its own.
Any questions for anybody?
Second.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-three is approved and becomes ordinance fifty-two forty-seven. Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-four deals with the final plat for Lebanon Marketplace, which is, uh, the Southdale that we talked about two weeks ago. And has been approved by planning its own.
Second. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Move on the second.
Second, second.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-four is approved and becomes ordinance fifty-two forty-eight. Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-five deals with the final plat for Lenin C Ford subdivision.
Second.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes. Move on, second.
Second, second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-five is approved and becomes ordinance fifty-two forty-nine. Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-six deals with final plat for Nelson Park subdivision.
Second. Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Move on, second.
Second, second. Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-seven has been approved and is now ordinance fifty-two fifty-one. Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-eight deals with mutual aid agreement between Lebanon.
Is it fifty-one?
Should have been fifty.
Law enforcement.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, thirty-nine ninety-seven deals with the law enforcement grant, which is a hundred percent grant, provide some cones and lights for the police department.
Second.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes. Move on, second.
Second, second. Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Thirty-nine ninety-seven has been approved and is ordinance fifty-two fifty-one. Now we move to the mutual aid agreement between Fort Lemont Wood Fire Protection and Lebanon Fire.
Most approve. Second.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
And Herny. Move on, second.
Second.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Thirty-nine ninety-eight has been approved and becomes ordinance fifty-two fifty-three. Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-nine deals with hazardous waste recycling grant, which again involves no match and which allows us to set up receiving stations for household hazardous waste.
Second.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Move on, second.
Second, second. I have a question. Does anyone know if this is a fixed spot or a?
Okay, we can, uh, I'll let Richard kind of go over the details and Mel's here to, uh, talk about it if you want. Please, Mel, Melissa Meyer, she's the one that manages this grant. She can speak to it.
Is, is it a fixed location or is it a, like, once or twice a year?
Why don't you just give a full summary of both of them?
Our current facility is a fixed location. It resides back at our public works facility at fourteen oh one West Commercial. And it's been there for about a decade now. With this particular grant that we've received, um, the district had asked us to open this up to a district-wide facility, making it available to all residents within the three counties within that district. And that includes Lebanon, I'm sorry, La Cleve County, Camden and Miller County. For the Camden and Miller County, we're going to have a one-day satellite event. That is not going to be a fixed facility. It's just going to be a one-day event.
How often are we going to do that?
For this particular program, it's just going to be once this year. If it's a successful program and they want us to try it again, we'll put it in the application for next year.
Okay. Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Council Bill thirty-nine ninety-nine has passed and is ordinance fifty-two fifty-three. Council Bill four thousand, the Agreement for School Signalization Improvement.
Richard. This is a safety out to school grant that Melissa was able to get. They're very hard to, to receive. We've received bids on this, uh, pretty close to what our estimates was. We're asking council to give, uh, mayor of the station to go into, enter into a contract with you and Signal. We will, we will have to get Federal Highway Commission approval before we, uh, execute the contract. This is, uh, signalization for the school zones at Maple Lane, over on, uh, uh, over at Hillcrest, over on Hoover Street, Boswell over on Mill Creek, then, uh, the Easter Elementary, the only, only one, and then over by the junior high.
What kind of signals?
They'll, they'll be the, our old flashing lights. You, you, you've all seen those and it has a.
The amber light.
They've, they've been up for like two decades and they, they, we made them.
We wore out.
Yeah. And these will be a, uh, a sign system that will actually have a, uh, mileage radar in there. So it encourages people to slow down. They'll be positioned in approximately the same location as the existing school zone lights are. This is a non-matching, matching grant, so, um, it's a hundred percent.
Richard, I don't know what the timeframe is, but what about Hillcrest?
Hillcrest will be, is on there.
But by the time we get it done, will, will they be using that building?
I'm sure they will.
They've had a time.
I mean, they.
Set on it, didn't it?
It could probably be moved out to Fremont. Yeah, we, I mean, we can relocate these. They're not too awful tough, so. Yeah, we get, we'll get fi- Federal Highway Commission approval and then we'll move forward on this.
Most approve.
Second. Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Second, second. Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Council Bill four thousand is approved and is ordinance fifty-two fifty-four. Council Bill forty oh one deals with purchase of chlorine and something that I'm not going to try and pronounce for the water department.
Second. Did you want to tell something, Richard?
It's just chlorine and fluoride we're feeding into our drinking water. It's something we've done for decades. Same vendor.
And that, you just said a word I was trying to avoid saying.
Well, either fluorosilic acid yet.
He didn't say it. He's just messing with you.
Did we get a motion?
Yes, we do. You ready for the roll call? Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes. Move on, second.
Second, second.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Council Bill four thousand and one has been approved and is ordinance fifty-two fifty-five. Council Bill fifty-four thousand and two deals with, uh, the purchase for the wastewater treatment plant.
Move to approve.
Second.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Council Bill four thousand and two has been passed and is ordinance fifty-two fifty-six. Council Bill four thousand and three deals with purchase of, uh, road salt.
Richard, when are we going to try the beet juice? Are we trying it already?
Yeah, we actually have plans to try some of that this year. Uh, we can get those in the, uh, the, uh, Skid Mount tanks. And so we're able to buy it in a, a small scale and not have to invest very much money in detoxing the tanks. So we'll try some of that this year. On this, uh, most of the vendors we've, we've dealt with in the past are still meeting obligations for last year. Basically, they told us, good luck. Talked to us about November, we may have some salt. And so we, uh, our purchasing agent was able to run some salt down and secure four hundred tons. That's, that's usually about what we'll use on an average year. Last year, we used over that. I did attend the special road district meeting last week, discuss some other things and talk to them a little bit about maybe us partnering next year in purchasing salt with us both going together. We would, that would increase our, the volume. Put it up to eight hundred to a thousand tons and may perk the interest of, of vendors a little bit more, maybe get us a little bit better price. So we'll try to do that next year.
Thank you, Richard.
Richard, do we team with anybody, any other like special road districts or anything like that to try to get a better price by using more?
Uh, in the past, we've tried a little bit on like road oil, uh, but, you know, uh, not a whole lot.
Not been too successful.
A lot of people like to be independent, you know, uh, so.
Me too, but if it costs me money, I can change my mind.
Mainly what we've done with, with other agencies, we've, we've, uh, tried to utilize specialty equipment that not all of us can afford to have singles of. And so we, like, like for example, they have the, the brush trimmer. We, they do that for us and we do road striping for them, that kind of stuff. If, if, if we run low on salt, they will help us out and vice versa.
Thank you.
Second. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree. Crabtree.
Yes. Boo on second.
Second to second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Council Bill four thousand and three is approved and is ordinance fifty-two, fifty-seven. Council Bill four thousand and four deals with the purchase of, uh, asphalt oil.
Most approved.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Council Bill four thousand and four. Oh, wait, I thought that was second, I'm sorry.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Now, Council Bill four thousand and four is approved and ordinance fifty-two, fifty-eight. Council Bill four thousand and five deals with the purchase of, uh, tack oil.
Second.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
What is tack oil?
This is asphalt oil that'll be sprayed on, sprayed on a road to seal it.
Okay, well, I know what tack is and I knew we didn't have a horse patrol, so I just wanted to know.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second to second.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Council Bill four thousand and five is approved and is ordinance fifty-two, fifty-nine. Council Bill four thousand and six deals with, uh, asphalt on Boswell Tennis and Basketball Court.
Most approved.
Which is currently unusable for tennis, if you look at it.
Talk about it, need to, or, or self-explanatory, it's an asphalt building from Willard Asphalt who already has our street asphalt bid, so we saved some money on that. Um, one of the most expensive part is the paint, which is a pretty rubberized thick paint that doesn't go very far, a gallon does like a hundred square feet, plus you have to put sand and everything else in it, so it doesn't go very far, so the sand, the paint alone is about eight thousand dollars. Uh, we're looking at some options there, maybe not painting, um, the tennis court, the basketball side with two coats, just putting one coat on it and doing some other things creatively. Um, non-colored paint on the tennis court side, make it maybe a yellow jacket, black and gold tennis court instead of the red like it has been in the past, get rid of some of the cost of the red paint. But we're, we're trying to keep it as affordable as we can, we'll take the fence down, we'll put the fence back up, but it's just an expensive project.
John, how long will this overlay last, what's the lifespan?
If we, if we can take good care of it, a little better than we have in the past, um, probably really good eight to ten years, after that it starts to get to be a little bit subject to some cracking and things like that. We looked at a couple other ways of doing this, which is stressed concrete, we looked at artificial turf and a couple other things, they're so affordable, right, uh, so expensive right now that they're really not affordable. The, the cost of stressed concrete alone, we can probably asphalt it again three or four times before we pay for one stressed concrete installment, there's no local suppliers doing stressed concrete, we'd be looking at about a hundred thousand dollars just for the concrete. And then we still have to paint it, stripe it, buy the equipment, everything else, so you'd be talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar project.
And then how long will the paint last?
Well, the paint's something we'll have to do and we've always done in the past, it's about five to six years depending on weather. But then, once you get the first coat on, the rest of them go on a lot better, it's that first coat on the fresh asphalt, it has to set for twenty-eight days before we can even paint it and then takes two coats to fill all the holes and. So, next time we paint it, it'll be about half the cost, maybe a third of the cost. And we'll do that in-house ourselves, all the painting will be done by Parkstaff.
John, is that a full project?
Yes, yeah, we'll get, Willard's in there, if this is approved, I'll get Willard's in there as soon as we can get the paperwork done, get on the schedule and he'll get to it as quick as possible. Um, hopefully, we'll start painting by the end of October, or middle of October.
Are the courts presently unusable?
Pretty close, not safely, in my opinion.
How much traffic do those courts receive?
Tennis is a really cycleable sport, sometimes it's really busy and sometimes it's not, and it just goes up and down, right now, we've actually seen more play in it in the last six months than I've seen in quite a while, so. I don't have a hard number, they don't check in, they're not organized, you know, all I can tell you is what I see playing and it does get some play.
Is the backboard, are they in pretty good condition?
Yes, yes, the back, the single board, so if you want to go out and practice, yes, it's fine. Parks seventy-nine, Park Board did approve this project.
How long's it been since any improvements have been made there?
I think it was nineteen eighty, but it, that could be, Bill might remember a little better than I do, were you around then?
I was around then.
Eighty, it could've been eighty or eighty-two. Eighty or eighty-two, well, I, I didn't remember if you were on council.
Hope you didn't ask any more questions.
Well, and I thought you might've heard Sam say, cause Sam always talked about that one being, uh.
I don't remember.
Something he, uh.
Well, and that's just to the actual court, I mean, you've done some fencing and lighting and.
Yes, over the years.
Basketball backboard type.
Yeah, we've been, we've maintained it, it's just the cracks now, it just has to be resurfaced.
That was one of the very first things that went in that park, I do remember that.
Yeah, and then, and then Sam, Sam's always said that one of the first things he did when he came on board was to re-asphalt that tennis court. So, whenever he started, went a bit about this time, I think it was about eighty or eighty-two.
Ms. Herny.
I made motion to approve.
Sorry.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Second. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Move on to second.
Second, second.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yeah.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Council Bill four thousand and six is approved and becomes ordinance fifty-two, sixty. Council Bill four thousand and seven deals with, uh, upgrading our electrical, and would you speak to that?
What we're doing here is, uh, replacing out crossarms and all the hardware on, uh, two sections of, uh, overhead electric. Both these sections are overhead copper, they've been up for multiple decades and, and they are a maintenance issue. Uh, the one down in Michigan, we, we responded to several outages down there past winter, just because the, the old copper lines, the, the copper will crystallize and get hard and it'll start failing and break. That's what we're trying to do here.
Any questions?
Second.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny. Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes. Boo on second.
Second to second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Council Bill four thousand and seven is approved and is ordinance fifty-two, sixty-one. This concludes our, uh, first and second readings, now we'll move to first readings and start with Council Bill four thousand and eight, which deals with, uh, ward realignment. You have, uh, two options and. This is something that we have been fussing about for a year and a half and have been unable to agree on a particular option. A council person brought in a map in response to one that Jeff Porter probably spent at least forty hours working on and is to be commended. Because so often we get input from council after the fact, as it were, so. Uh, we do thank Councilman Elmore for his efforts with regard to this. And. You have a choice to make, you want the, uh, the Jeff Porter map or the later addition. And I'd suggest that we. Just make a motion, discuss, and vote.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go.
We voted the other night, five to two, to use the, the Exhibit A. And you told us at that meeting that that was what we would be voting on, only one, we wasn't gonna vote on two, you said there would be one.
I did, no, I, I don't know that I said that there'd be one, but I did s- say that we would bring that, uh, what is now Exhibit A forward. Uh, in the meantime, as you know, several, I was approached by fellow councilpeople wanting an option, so we have an option. If you'd like to present a motion in favor of, uh.
Mayor.
Exhibit A.
Um, in order to, um, move forward on this, there will have to be an amendment to the council bill to choose either, um, Section A with the Exhibit A, or excuse me, Section Two with Exhibit A or Section Two with Exhibit B.
All right.
So, we'll have to exclude one.
Let's have a motion to rearrange the wards and then we will deal with amendments.
Explain that amendment again, what we're doing here.
First, can I have a motion as second and then, and then we can discuss.
I realize we have a defective ordinance because you have two Sections Two under the same one, which you can't have, but. Are you going to draw up another ordinance, is that what you're saying?
No, so, so the first thing, we just need to put the bill on the floor, so we need a motion as second on the bill. If we get that, then we'll need a motion to amend the bill on the council's preference of Exhibit A or Exhibit B. And then, once that amendment is made, then we'll make a final motion or a final vote on the bill for a first reading. So, before we do anything, we need to have a motion as second for the bill to, to even become on the floor, it's a court debate.
Motion approved.
Second.
So now, now the bill's up there, so.
Yeah, now you can go ahead and vote and then we'll deal with amendments.
We need to.
Do we need a vote?
We need to discuss.
We need to discuss now, now we're in discussion, for the amendment to which exhibit is the prevailing exhibit.
Mrs. Mitchell, you, uh, you made the request for a do-over, so have added.
I did and, and I, I voiced my concerns on presenting an option that did not have accurate census numbers. Since the standard is that we do districting or redistricting based on census figures, I could not agree with going along with a supposed figure. Because we could start pulling numbers out of the hat for all kinds of subdivisions, so that was my first concern. With option, I guess it's now A, I still want to use numbers. I also know that we asked, uh, staff to use the least amount of, of configuring, use streets as boundaries and the straightest lines. I've said before, I wasn't thrilled with Option Two, but it had the straightest street lines with the least convolution. And it's just easier to look at and know where the wards are, so, those were my, my two thoughts.
That is, anybody else?
Well, I, I still have a, a consideration, we spent fifteen hours sitting in here the other night talking about this and it took a vote on and we voted five to two to use the, the new one.
I think, I think you might.
And I don't understand why that now we're changing this all.
Councilman Crabtree, there was no formal vote taken, there was a, pretty much a.
It was a straw poll on who was gonna use A or B, is what it was, and we said we was going with A.
But it, there was no formal vote, for the record, there was no roll call taken.
You'll have an opportunity to support that, or, or if we can appro- approve. Anybody else?
Yes, yeah, I put too much time in it to not, to talk about it. First thing I want to do, first thing I want to do is clarify something, we were told previously that there was a law, a state law, saying we had to redistrict every ten years, did you ever find that? Well.
Jeffrey presented it in his presentation.
Redistricting in two eleven, a brief summary for local government officials, heading process for redistricting. The process for redistricting a city is not mandated by federal or Missouri law, although a city charter or ordinance may provide a guide and it goes on to tell how the city or ordinance may do it. Just for the record, there is no law stating you have to do this, naturally you want to do it, it's the right thing to do, but I want to clarify that, there is no law saying you have to do this, folks. Now. I'm also kind of questioning like Cleo, why has Exhibit B showed up when it's been voted down twice? I agree it was a straw poll the other night, but that, the purpose of that was so we didn't have this tonight, so we didn't have a public display, which is probably what we're gonna have right here. Cause I will defend Exhibit A. Now, referring to your email. Your reasons that you gave, similar to what you just said, it's not right to base population on a prediction, that is true. According to municipal standards, we are to use current data, that is true, might I point out that every number that was on that map was current data? Every number that was on that map is current data.
The one that you brought?
The one, any map we've looked at, all the data on it was the, the data that Jeff and Chris put on it. There was no presumption on anything whatsoever at any time, so that point is moot.
Dennis, but you pointed out the new subdivisions and you were figuring in three hundred and some people for that.
No, we just said that was, how would I say it, that was icing on the cake, that was not, that would, we're only saying, since there was a difference of three or four hundred, that in reality, that would make it up, but those figures were not used in that. And if you'll check the figures and do your math, you'll see that that's exactly the way it is, I wouldn't come in here and tell you something that you could look up. Secondly, your second reason, use presumptive numbers, will still leave us open to a lawsuit. Again, that's a moot point, we're not using presumptive numbers, they are all factual numbers that has been drawn and put on there. Your third point, Jeffrey put considerable hours into preparing many options for us to consider. Jeff left, uh, and I appreciate that, but just because somebody puts a lot of time into something doesn't mean it's right and it doesn't mean that it's accurate whatsoever. However, it was helpful. Your last statement, your last numbered statement, if we do nothing, we will be faced with a lawsuit for not redistricting, we are doing something, or at least we're attempting to do something. I might remind you, I have been the only one of the council that brought anything forward. And I really feel like the reason nothing was done sooner is because we were handed literature that could not be read, it had no, really no street markings on it, it was very difficult to see. I took that copy after last, after the last council meeting, a constituent come up to me and said, you really need to do something with your redistricting. And I explained, I had never been against redistricting. I, only comment was, if you want to redistrict, just make sure the lines and the boundaries are neat and some of those were chopped up so bad that the constituents would never have known what was going on, they were terrible. Your last statement, you asked to have Option Two back, back for consideration because the lines are clean and the wards are even, using the current census, that census data. The numbers are good, I'll give you that, are the lines really clean? No, they're not, they're terrible. Did you read this?
I did read that.
You did read that?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Do we not have these maps to put up? I mean, the people out here, if you got them, the people need to be seeing them. Did everyone get a copy of it, Tim? Okay, well, I think I can do mine from memory. Originally listed as Option Two, which is now Exhibit B, excuse me. The original boundary of Ward Four, the southern boundary, was the Burlington Rail. If you'll follow over, somebody got a pointer up there, it looks like, okay, if you'll follow over to Beck Lane, where it intersects with Burlington, or, yeah, with the Burlington Rail. This is your map, your map travels in a southerly direction to Ivy Lane, which is one point two miles. When you get to Ivy Lane, you make a left, you travel another point five miles to Elm, when you get to Elm, you turn another right, you travel down Elm till you get to B and D Truck Port. And you get to B and D Truck Port, you make a right onto WW, you travel WW to the city limits, it was, it's basically where the saddle club is, if anybody knows. You have added, added to Ward Four, you have added two point eight miles. You still want to tell me your lines are clean? Okay, let's go over to Fremont. Fremont at South Five. You, you want to bring in part of your, part of your ward over into Ward Three. When you cross Highway Five, you travel to your first little housing development, I guess it could be called a subdivision, I don't know if it's named or not, but. Anyway, when you travel through those subdivisions, there's three of them there, and when you travel to the end of the last one, I'm not coming back, I'm just traveling one direction. You have traveled between two point four and two point five mile that you have added to Ward Three unnecessarily.
Unless you're trying to make numbers even, I know what, I know what you're saying, Dennis, Ward Four has to grow because it's been the smallest.
You do realize there's more.
So, you have to bring those people in from somewhere.
You do realize there's more to redistricting than numbers, don't you?
I do get that and I also know that primarily, I understand, you want the option that you drew and, and I understand that.
Well, I want to defend and want you and everybody here to know why I want that. Well, I want to defend and want you and everybody here to know why I want that option. Now.
Dennis, um, in regards to my notes that I took when Jeffrey did his presentation. He said it was, uh, RSMO one dot one zero zero dot one under the equal protection clause, US Missouri, US and Missouri constitution was what?
Yeah, I think that's listed.
Yeah, is why, is why we need to redistrict.
Is there anything you'd like?
Is that not a law, Chris?
Wait a minute, no.
It's a law. You were, you, you started your presentation.
This says, this says there is no law. Would you like to read it? This was the redistrict, redistricting guide of two thousand and eleven. And it's right here. I'll need that by yourself. Well, then we have something in conflict, but. But nevertheless, we're gonna redistrict anyway. And I'll read this later. Now, getting back to this.
This is to your own.
This is what I'm wanting, yeah.
That's, that's your mark to copy.
That's why I couldn't find it. It wasn't here. The most common criteria imposed for cities is that districts, wards and zones be composed of compact and adjacent territory. Can you tell me that that's compact and adjacent when you've added four or five miles of linear distance? No, you can't. A city can help avoid a challenge to its districts by using standard redistricting criteria. Although a standard redistricting criteria, standard criteria includes population equality, compact districts of contiguous territory, retention of neighborhood boundaries, retention of precinct boundaries, retention of other community of interest, desire to retain historic boundaries, consideration of incumbency. You have missed every one of those except for probably the incumbency. Almost every one of those you have missed. Now. Let's go a little further. On your map, on Fremont, once you get to about the care center, somewhere along in there. The only thing connecting that side of Ward Three with your proposed side of Ward Three is about a half to three quarter mile of a fifty foot asphalt strip. When you come back up on Beck Lane, you have split right down the middle a neighborhood there. And I can go on and on. Again, I don't know why this is even brought back.
Well, I could point out the same thing because where you've drawn your dividing line along Morton and then it dips down and then it cuts over and I believe that says Willow and then it shoots back up and over this way. That's not a straight line in any way, shape or form.
Say everything was straight.
So, well, it's, you know, it's apples and oranges.
No, it's not.
It is. You're just.
Well, it is apples and oranges. You're right, it is. This map here follows no guidelines whatsoever. It does not. I'm sorry, it does not follow guidelines.
And, and I, I can appreciate that you have an opinion.
Okay. Now, let me ask you something else. You're very concerned about lawsuits. That seems to be one of the big deals is lawsuits. Have you thought about, have you thought about, no. Have you thought about though what type, who would, what type of person, I mean, you've had a long time to think on this. Where do you think that would come from? A lawsuit on something like this?
On which one?
On any of it. Just on redistrict.
If, if we don't redistrict?
No, if we redistrict either one. Where do, where do you think a lawsuit would come from?
Based on not using current, but when you first presented this, you said your figures were based on the supposed new subdivisions, Dennis. You said that Monday night.
No, they were not. They were not. Everybody used the, the, the very same map that night that was shown. I did change the numbers on that map.
You said they're gonna be built and there's, and you circled it and said, and that's where I took that train of thought. Because if we're gonna build, if we're gonna do a map based on houses that are coming, then why wouldn't somebody present a lawsuit saying you just pulled those numbers out of the air?
Okay. So we, we would assume there's a miscommunication. Does that change your mind?
Not entirely.
Okay. Well, let's go a step further. When we talk about somebody hitting us with a lawsuit. I don't like to talk about it. The more it's talked about, the more people get ideas, but. When I think of someone that might want to slap something on us, I look at, I look at your map. And I see the unnecessary.
And this isn't my map. I didn't draw, I didn't draw this map.
It's, it's, well. It's, it's kinda being referred to as Dennis's map, Michelle's map, but okay. We'll, we'll look at option two. Let's put it like that. The type of person, I feel that might challenge something like this would be a concerned citizen. Someone who cares about the operations and the political aspects of city government. Someone who attends council meetings. Someone who sometimes speaks at council meetings. That type of person. The type of person that brings you information and gives you guidance to go by and you ignore it.
And so you're gonna let one citizen out of fourteen hundred make your decision for you?
I'm gonna let this make my decision because I'll tell you why. This map right here looks so guilty on face value. It's, it's guilt ridden. And I'm not accusing anybody of anything.
Yes, you are.
But it's got gerrymandering written all over it.
I know what gerrymandering means. It means you draw a map for your own benefit.
That's exactly right.
I did not draw this map and I don't like that inferral from you and I don't like the inferral from the opinion writer of the newspaper. And we'll leave it at that.
I have a question. Jeff, the outside of the view. Were these numbers based on the two thousand and ten census? Is that correct? So since that time, there's been other developments that have gone in that don't show on these.
Yeah, but you know, one one hundred and one says that you have to use the central census.
Correct, correct. But I, but so our next census will show, and that will always be the case. I mean,
It will always be the case.
It will always be the case. So we're five years, we're four years, we're five basically behind already because especially for wards, they've really grown. Is that a correct statement, probably?
Yeah, you're always gonna be about two years behind because they take the census one year and then takes about a year to process. So you're about a year behind. Like, can't get the actual verified number.
My, my other comment would be, uh, very sad that only one person in the entire city spoke tonight on this during a public hearing. And my second comment would be, when I sat up here just since I've been here, a name was thrown out at me that somebody just alluded to would sue us. I didn't even know that person lived in that area. I had no clue, um, when these were drawn up. And I just, I, I don't think we should bring up individuals or what if. There could be Joe Schmo in my ward that now is not in my ward that was gonna run against me in two years. You know, I mean, I, I don't think you can draw lines based on that because even the law says it's by incumbent, people that are already there that it would affect. So if I was cut out, yeah, I'd be fighting right now. But if I, I mean, I just. I think you can, you can't bring up individuals, I think that. But if I'm fair to the individual too, um.
I'm just saying that's the type of person that would do it.
Well.
I mean, when they bring you information
Oh, I'm, I'm not.
and you ignore it.
Well, I don't like to talk about a person, period.
Just say it.
I've got three brief comments. First, I'm still upset that these maps have never been published. Even if the city had to take the time and effort to use it as a legal publication. This is obviously something we have some feelings about and some interest in. And I don't think we've informed the public as to exactly what the issues are on this. Secondly, the, the primary goal throughout this has been to buttress the population in Ward, in Ward Four. If you look at, at what was handed out tonight as exhibit A, we have four compact, relatively equal wards to work with. Their boundaries are, are well defined. If Ward Four is what we're trying to increase, why did we carve out the area from Utah to Ivy and put that into Ward Three? That, that change, or excuse me, that proposal in exhibit B upsets me. The issue of the ground east of South Five past Fremont being included in Ward Three bears no relationship to anything. That, that needs to be a part of Ward Two. There, there's no reason to make that a part of Ward Three. So tho- those are my comments.
Randy, just in, just in clarification, that you, between Utah and Ivy there, east of, um, Beck Lane was always in Ward Three. Now, now, all of that, everything west of Beck Lane was also Ward Three. Everything there, south of Commercial and, and all of that was all Ward Three. So he's, they've just extended Ward Two down in there to add population, to add numbers. I think you're getting your Ward Two, Ward Three backwards there a little bit.
I'm, I'm just looking at drawing concise, compact boundaries and, and what's labeled as exhibit A meets that criteria.
I think they both, you know, the, the numbers in exhibit B are a little tighter. But I think they're both within the ten percent deviation, which is one of the things. So I think we're good either way as far as the numbers go. Um, I can see how, um, exhibit B, you could say everything north of Fremont and east of Highway Five up to, um, Elm is Ward Two. No, I guess up to Commercial is Ward Two. Except for that little section there between Washington and Jefferson. And that's in both maps. Looks like they've included that. So that, there's not that much difference. That seems like the only changes to me to Ward Two. I mean, or Ward Two, yeah. Ward Three and Ward Four are the ones that are primarily impacted. Cause I think Ward Three was the, one of the bigger ones.
It was, yeah.
I, and then Ward Two took some of Ward One as well, right? In both maps.
A little bit.
Anybody else have anything that they'd like to add?
I, I'm just concerned that we're maybe criticizing Mr. Porter unfairly. I think I, I would assume that he would have looked at all of the appropriate criteria when making his map. So I, I think it's unfair that to make that assumption that he didn't take any of these things into account that you were talking about, all these criteria.
You can't, you can't see that those aren't taken into account? You can't see that those aren't taken into account?
Yeah, standard population equality, the first one there.
What about compact?
Alls he did was take a little section. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, see, I think you're just being overly critical of his work.
No, look, look here. This is what you call compact. Look at this. This comes all the way down to I forty-four. That's not compact.
But this is a s- bigger spa- you know, your, 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 your old, your older part of town is more your densely populated area.
But look at this. But look what you can. Look what you can do without it, though.
Well, that is. I mean, I agree. I mean, I don't have a problem with either one of them is what I'm saying. I just don't, I, I just am concerned that you were a little harsh on Jeff Porter and.
Oh, no. Jeff knows, I, I respect Jeff Porter.
And that's what I'm trying to, I don't, yeah, I don't.
Jeff only does what he's told to do.
We, we have had several options and that was his job was to give us options.
Right.
So, no one, Jeff knows better than that. Jeff's helped me. He knows better than that. Uh, I'm not concerned that he feels any different about that. You can take this map. Map A, which is this one redrawn. And you can lay it fairly over today's existing, and there's not that much difference in it. Nothing like this. This is, I'm sorry, folks, this is ridiculous compared to what you can have.
Well, there again, that, that's kinda harsh words, Dennis. I mean, he, he's the man that drew it. Um.
This, I'm not. Yeah, but we're the ones that's choosing. He gave us, we have choices. And I'm comparing the choices.
Yeah, I mean.
I guess I just found it amazing that if there's so much controversy over there, why did only one person speak tonight? You know, I guess.
Uh, why did only one person speak on electric rates?
Well, exactly. I agree. I agree.
So, see, okay. That's kinda moot point, you know.
That's what I'm saying. When we come to that discussion, I'm gonna say the same thing.
So, well. I've presented them. I give you your option. You make the decision. And you let the chips fall where they may. And I'm ready to call for the vote.
Can't you? I amend to the side.
Yeah, that's true.
I'll, I'll be ready to amend then.
Yes, and the amendment would be to strike whichever section with the, uh, exhibit you don't want.
Okay, I have, I'll change my mind since last month. I moved to strike B. Motion, Mister, strike B as in Bravo?
Yes. I'll second.
Just a second.
Please.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herney? No. Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Mather?
Yes, it's fine. I, I have no problem with either one of them.
Okay. That's the roll call on the amendment. So exhibit B is stricken from the ordinance. We have a motion and a second on the floor and this will be the roll call for the first reading. And that will begin with, um, Councilman Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
You need us.
No, no.
The second reading will be at the next meeting.
Do you think that, um, going along with what Mr. Suter says, do you think we might have hopefully publish them, do something? Cause this was only the first reading. And I know they're on our website and here.
Yeah, you know, something.
That's open to paper.
Absolutely. So, so let's, so, so let me, let me. Now that, now that we have, now that we have a map, I can now, I'll go on Community Ties, I'll do that piece in the paper. I'll start everything in my power to make sure that it's communicated in every possible direction. Facebook, website, Community Ties, paper, anything. Now that we've got a map and, and a decision's been made, we can now let staff do our job to publicize it.
Right, because if people come back next time and, and say, hey, what were ya thinking there? I'd love to hear from them.
Absolutely. So you'll, you'll see it many times between now and the next council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we ready for a vote on the motion as, as amended?
What was the vote number?
No, uh, for the, for the, for reading, just one reading to know on the amendment.
Six, two.
On the amendment.
On the amendment, it was, um, yeah, six or two.
Now we'll move to first reading in Council Bill forty oh nine, which would rail around our electric rights.
I have one question. When will these go into effect?
The electric rates?
Yeah.
We've slated the, uh, bill, the, the first billing in October. So that also will give us ample time to communicate the effects to the, all of the affected issues. So, obviously the winter, and the reason we picked that time is, as this bill calls for, the deletion of the winter rates. Uh, those generally, those generally go in effect, those do go in effect in October. So we thought with first billing cycle in October is the appropriate time for that to go in effect.
And you just said something I, I, I wanna understand. You said the winter rates. Winter rates, like, for someone like myself who has a very small house, I don't get winter rates unless I use over two thousand.
Sure, sure, in the, in, yeah, in the, in our current, uh, code, we have a price of zero six one, um, April through October. For any, essentially any, uh, I'm sorry, May, May through October, I apologize. For any, can, two thousand kilowatt hours and above. So that's you break off. So once, right now, uh, what, what was defined as the summer rate? The, uh, last tier is zero seven three, and so, um, and then May through October, they pick up a, uh, uh, sixth tier. And it goes to zero six one. And so you would only, and you don't, and, and just because you may get it one month, doesn't mean you'll get it another mon- you have to, you just break over that tier. So we just have two separate rate tables that we apply during those times.
So that rate isn't for everyone as it is right now?
No.
Unless they use, like, maybe somebody in an apartment or smaller rental, or a small home like myself, may never ever.
That's correct.
Get that unless.
If you don't, if your, if your utility bill never reaches over two thousand kilowatt hours in a particular month, you will not see the benefit of the zero six one tier. Which is defined as the winter rate.
Anybody else have questions with regard to this? Comments?
We need a motion on the floor for further discussion. Please.
Motion approved.
Second.
Now we'll discuss.
Again, I'll make the same comment there. I, I wish we had heard the more than two people tonight. One was just a comment about, um, the cold and the, the effect of it, which I see, and I really appreciate your comment because I, and both of yours, cause I agree with it. You know, we, we don't know what's down the road, and.
These rates are not approached with the city's.
Yeah, just within the city. And not even all of them, because some of them have, um, completely electric, within the city limits also.
I hear an unco- unaccustomed silence come from you, Mr. Suter. Would you like to talk about this?
Ju- just one comment. Um, I figured out my bill as best I could on mine. It's gonna cost eight dollars a month. Over where it was, that I heat and cool, not with electric. But I heat and cool thirty-two hundred square feet, and it's gonna cost about eight and dollars and a half a month extra. I heat with gas. But the elect- summertime electric is big on me, and I have never, ever broken fifteen hundred.
Chuck, does that include your meter charge? Twelve dollars for a meter?
Yep.
Now, how's it gonna charge eight dollars over what it is?
The other part's gonna go down, the other part's gonna go down a little bit. Oh. I think, let me look at my notes again here, too.
Well, and I would point out, too, because there's a, there's a little bit of miscommunication going on this twelve dollar service fee, service availability.
Your notes are gonna get twelve dollars on those terms.
Yeah. I may not.
Right now, bills have an eight dollar and forty-one cent minimum, and so truly, they're only gonna see a four dollar increase, not a twelve dollar increase. So.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I'll start with that. On the handout that we received. The, the multicolored one. Beginning with group five hundred, there was a twelve dollar and twenty-five cent increase. Eight hundred, one thousand were the same. Group twelve hundred was thirteen, fourteen, thirteen dollars and fourteen cents. Uh, fourteen oh two, fourteen ninety-five, fourteen oh five, fourteen oh five. You know, the, the information that is provided to this council in the work session, it does not match with, with what we were just told. And I think that's part of the problem. I have asked the city administration on at least three occasions for information. I've yet to receive an answer to any of those emails. Uh, the, the basic question in my mind comes down to this. We've got approximately one point three million dollars coming in in rental income. If we're not gonna spend it to give our citizens a break and to help the people that can't help themselves, where is it gonna go? Rest of you have been receiving copies of my emails and my questions. I'm not gonna belabor them one. Where's the money going?
Well, my understanding is you're referring to the loan repayments to the electric reserve.
No, I'm referring to the rental payments the city's receiving. Where does that money go? Where does it go?
Goes into Fund Forty-Five, doesn't it?
And where does that go?
Well, currently, I mean, currently there are notes that offset those.
Yeah, that goes to the repayment to the electric reserve, is my understanding.
Okay, but not all of it does. Where does the money go? We're getting one point three million. If that's going all into the electrical fund, I'm not following your math. You know, I believe the mayor said next year it'll drop to four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Is, is all that the electric fund receives. Where does it go?
The mayor doesn't recall having said anything about, uh, a drop to four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, or whatever.
I do.
I mean, the electric.
The payment from, from the economic development you said to the electric fund would drop to under five hundred thousand dollars, Mr. Mayor. That was your justification for adding two million dollars to the, the electric fund? I don't understand this.
I mean, every, currently, every, we, we've got three projects, four projects. Copeland, Dalco, Detroit Dual Metal Products, and Homestead. Each of them have.
Homestead?
Yeah.
Been dead for two years.
Loan, does it, loan still exists?
We're still paying it forward.
And I communicated that every time, that, that the, the borrowing of funds, and this goes back to two thousand and eleven. The, our code currently requires that all loans be, uh, paid back at a five percent interest. So the electric fund, long before, um, two thousand and eleven, loaned money and then repaid. The last loan it was given was in, was in two thousand and eleven for the nine hundred thousand for DTMP. So those, so every, currently, every facility has a rental payment and a debt payment. And then there are some debt payments, like Homestead, that is, this year alone will be, in FY fifteen, will be twenty-eight thousand dollars coming out of Fund Forty-Five. Back into the electric reserve. That's where it has to go. That's what our code says. Our code doesn't say that we can use that for, um, uh, the, the operating. Now, you guys have changed code, um, and so if you wanna change that, then we can change that. Um, in terms of the other projects, those, um, at this time, their dollar for dollar for their lease payment equals their debt payment. So it comes in forty-five and it goes right into eighty. That's where it goes. I mean, so the only margin that we had talked about is, um, the second loan for DTMP. We did in two thousand and, uh, eleven for nine hundred. We, uh, the ordinance at that time was for a fifteen-year, uh, note. At five percent on nine hundred thousand was seventy-one hundred. Um, we, and the lease payment is, um, as, as you guys know, we're still waiting for federal approval of that lease before we enter into lease pay- lease payment. So, so in terms of the revenue coming in, it is paying back the notes that it has, so.
My problem is on page two hundred of the budget. And it lists a number of sources of revenue. And I don't see where the investment income is.
I have to. Okay. I can look on page two hundred of the budget.
Yeah, while we've got a pause, let me correct myself. I did miss the twelve dollar addition on that. First mistake I made today.
So. Page two hundred is, um, the operating revenue. Go to page two oh five. Two oh five is where the revenue is calculated for the rents, the debt service coming in. Because by our code, it has to be repaid to the reserve, not the operating. So page two oh five is where that is reflected, and the reason it's reflected at a rate that it's reflected is because at the development of the budget, we were aware of a one-time, potential one-time increase, and so that's been calculated within that budget. So, um, so in terms of, in the actual two, page two hundred, that's, that's the operating. And so that can, that is germane to customer billing and, uh, funds associated with the actual operations of the electric fund. The borrowing of money for the economic proj- uh, projects, which were made decisions long before any of this board was setting and other boards. That is by our code required to go into the reserve. So that's where that money is articulated in the reserve, and then the associated expenses, which, as you guys recall, you took out the million for the AMI. So, uh, but that is where that money resides. Um, as it relates to the, the overall, where does it go? It goes, lease payments come into forty-five. The debt is between Fund Forty-Five and Fund Eighty. So Fund Forty-Five has a liability to pay off Fund Eighty's reserve. And so that, and that's happening on an annual basis, and it's principal pu- plus interest. And that's where the due to and due to from come from.
If you look at capital expense, machinery and equipment, that's one point six hundred fifty million. How much of that was AMI? And how much of that was other expenses? Is all of that AMI?
In the reserve?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Uh, no, I think there's, no, there's one truck. We put, I'm sorry, we put a truck out of the reserve to, to manage. You know, again, going back to, going back to some of the budget discussions, we had tried to limit the, we, we can't afford any capital. I mean, this budget as it sets is a three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar deficit in the, uh, in the operating. That ins- that assumed a year's worth of electric increases. So one of the things that we did is we put AMI and a piece of equipment in the reserve. Because if you go all the way back into the eighties, the reserve fund started as a depreciation account. We haven't funded any depreciation out of the operating since two thousand and five. So zero dollars have been transferred from utility billing or operations into our depreciation account, which then was subsequently named in the early nineties, the reserve fund, and it's been that since. We've not put a single dime in that fund since two thousand and five from the operating account. So.
But last year, the offer, excuse me, last year, the reserve account grew by something over a million dollars. And right now, we're sitting on something like eight point eight or eight point nine million dollars cash in the electric operating reserve.
That's not, that's not, that's not correct either. That's not correct, and I've communicated that. I pulled the balance sheet from today, today, as of nine forty-six AM. Claim on pooled cash, which is our checkbook for the operating, negative one million, six hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty cents. Overdrawn. Claim on pooled cash for the reserve is two million, five hundred, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and ninety-four cents.
And then we also have a savings account.
Then we've got a savings account at US Bank, six million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-four cents. So your net effect, you, you're over, we're overdrawn in the operating.
I wanna separate the two accounts.
They have. They're all three separated.
Okay.
They're absolutely all three separated. And so, um, so the, so the net effect is we're probably sitting on, today, we're probably sitting on seven point three. Total, total cash for our entire, uh, electric reserve and operating, because we're negative one point six million in our checking account. So, I mean, but again, we've got seven point three. We got seven point three that it, that we're sitting on today.
In a combination of the three accounts?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Now, I wanna go back to page two oh five and continue the thought you started.
Okay.
If AMI dies, that means we have one point six, we were spending approximately two hundred thousand on a truck. That means we're adding one point four million dollars to the operating reserve.
No, no.
That's what this says.
No. The reserve, if you look at four dash two one five, that's a different department. We set up the reserve as a different department, so all.
I'm looking at page two oh five.
I am too. Yeah, four dash two one five, dash three ten is miscellaneous general, and that's where you're seeing that income. That two fifteen is a separate department, because it has been historically important for us to keep track of the reserve. If you look at the operation, operating account, that's two hundred, that's Department two hundred. Those mom- those accounts are completely separate. Now, if you guys wanna make a policy decision to start putting all that money in the operating, that's fine. I mean, that's, that's a policy decision, that's not a, but, but currently, our code requires us to both keep them separate. And so we have set up, it's all under the same fund of the electric fund, but there's two separate departments, two hundred and two fifteen, and two fifteen's the reserve. So the reserve is. So the reserve is, is not part and parcel of the operating.
I understand that and I agree with that.
Okay.
I think that's good policy.
Yep.
My point is, if you look at the capital equipment, where you've got one point six million, we take out the money we were going to spend on a truck, that leaves one point four five million.
In the reserve.
In the reserve fund.
Sure.
So, bottom line is, we're adding one point four five million at the expense of rate increase on our constituents. I disagree with that as a policy mission. We're sitting on almost eight million dollars cash in the reserve account today. Six point five and, and the other number that you gave us just a minute ago.
Two point five.
In, in the reserve account alone, I'm perfectly happy to separate it.
Sure.
Leave that alone.
Yeah.
Don't put money into it, don't take money out of it. But anything that is coming in doesn't need to be added to that fund.
Yep, okay.
At the expense of our homeowners that cannot afford.
But we're burning through about.
And that's where I, I rest, I stop.
We're burning, and it, I mean, I present.
We're ten weeks into this fiscal year.
Yeah.
And as of this morning, we were six hundred thousand dollars behind, uh, in income less than expenses.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're burning through for our, sorry. In our, in our operating, we're burning through about three hundred thousand dollars a ye- month. And so there's two, there's two issues with one, we're burning through about three hundred thousand dollars a month in, on our, in our operating. So, uh, and then the second thing is, is there's a, I mean, there will be happen to be a, um, a ordinance presented to no longer pay back the liability to the reserve because that's bound, that's bo- that's, we're bound by ordinance to do that, and that's why our, it's picked up on our audit. So if we want to make a policy change to not pay back the loans or forgive the loans, then that's, I mean, that's, I need some direction on that, that's not something I can put forward, I mean.
Chris, if we do that, if we redirect the loan payments to offset the operational deficit, what's the impact of that?
Well, I mean, you, you know.
I mean, does it affect our borrowing capability or anything like that?
You're, we, we're lucky that we paid off our debt, uh, our outside debt in two thousand and, uh, eleven, we borrowed, we had a ninety nine issuance and a two thousand and three issuance. And we haven't had to borrow any money since then. But if your, if your rates are not, um, i- i- if your revenue cannot be sustained by your rates and your rates alone, that will absolutely affect the city's ability to borrow as it relates to the electric fund. I mean, I mean, bond council would say, you can't take this outside money and use it to subsidize your rate. I mean, they, I mean, they don't, they don't, they don't look at it. I understand that it's politically, it's a popular thing to do, and if, again, if that's the policy.
So you're saying that our bond rating would drop?
I'm saying, I'm saying that it would definitely, I, I'm saying if our, we had an issuance, uh, for the electric fund, that we would probably, are, would not get a fa- favorable bond rating if we used, if we used rents. Because that's not sustainable as a, as a electric, I mean, you're supposed to set your rates based on your utilization, not from miscellaneous income, so.
Um, I'll make a comment, personal comment. Um, as a person on a fixed income, even though I have a full-time job, I work for salary, so it's a fixed income. I, I work more than one job even, but I, I've been opposed to the electric rates, as you guys know, from day one. Um, until Mr. Wheeler made a comment, and Mr. Wheeler just has stuck with me the whole time. And he said, you can't sell a product for less than you're paying for it. To what you just said, Mayor, about, we're six hundred thousand dollars in the hole, then we're not.
In ten weeks.
In ten weeks.
So that's the three million dollars.
And I agree with Mr. Suter that, yes, we need to possibly look at changing that ordinance about where the money goes back to for the, the repayments there. But something to look at, I think that's a totally separate issue than, than this.
You can't roll back the rate, don't you tell me.
Right, but you can't depend on that, we might be able to use it for a few years, which is a few years, I'll give you that, I mean.
I feel Mr. Crabtree stirring over here.
I think I've said a lot, but, uh, I, I still have a problem with us taking six percent of the electric receipts and using it for something else. I, I think that it should be applied strictly to the electric and not to something else. And I think if we take that to a million some odd dollars, uh, and that's where we should be using it. And I agree with, uh, what we're saying over here, that we need to reformulate this and take that money that we don't need for the reserve and use it to take care of our citizens as long as we can. Okay, clear with that?
We collect a franchise tax from fidelity, from, uh, the gas company, from the telephone companies, and all that is, is an elect, is a tax on our business, which is a business, and based on the passage and the governor signing Senate Bill six fifty last year, I expect the telephone companies to come after our franchise taxes anyway. And they'd certainly have a strong argument in favor of doing away with franchise taxes if we didn't charge ourselves.
I just feel that any money that's paid in, our customer pays into electric bill should be used strictly for electric, that's it.
Okay.
It is, is it not? I mean, all of, all of the customer billing goes into operational, it does not go into the reserve.
No, it, it goes, we use a million five to fund this operation right here you're sitting in.
That's, no.
Well.
I mean, it's, it's a business tax, it's, yeah, it's a business.
But we use it to fund this operation, that's where it goes. I'm not.
Yeah, and I, and the fire, and the police, and all the other city services. It is twenty percent of the general budget.
I'm not arguing with the mayor's position on that.
Okay.
I'm not arguing with your position on that.
Anybody, yes?
Ms. Herney, I have not changed my mind on that statement, I stand by that statement. I think it's a legitimate statement. Other legitimate questions have been raised on this presentation. I think it has some flaws that have never been addressed. I think it's upside down on where the burden is, and I think the burden is on your household and my household. Now, any raise is not going to hurt anyone up here. I think it will affect some people out in the public very much. And I think we're upside down on our, on our policy that we're getting ready to, to establish this evening. I just think that it, it has some flaws that have never really been addressed. I know Mr. Suter has continually asked these questions that I'm not smart enough to ask, but I think they're legitimate questions that need to be, that need to be addressed. I think we need answers on them, and I have, I just don't feel comfortable with what we're doing. But I have not backed up on.
Yeah, no, it made me stop and think, I appreciate you for saying that.
Well, I have not reversed that position.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. I realize that we're probably burning up more than we've got. I'm not going to dispute that. I do feel like we should have searched some other avenues. We've, we're given this, we should have asked for more maybe. I would have liked to have looked at other avenues such as a, a, across the board, two percent, three percent, whatever number you want to throw out there. I'm not saying it would work, and I'm not saying it would solve the problem, but I would like to have had that opportunity to see what it would do. I, I have no idea if something like that would work, and evidently, nobody up here does either. So, you know, I think if something like that would have worked, it would maybe been more fair for everybody across. The problem I have with this one is, you know, some of the lower users are, you know, percentage wise, they're paying, they're paying the more when some of the larger industries aren't really paying anything, you know, in comparison to what they actually spend on electricity. Uh, I think the, the, the structure could have been better balanced, uh. I've always considered myself a working man, and I know what it's like raising a family. I know what it's like to put a cardboard in the bottom of your shoe when you go to work in the morning. I've never forgot those days. And, uh, I feel like we're maybe putting more of a burden on some of those people than we should be.
To your point, yes.
And therefore, I'm, you know, I'm really kind of appo- I'm opposed to not necessarily an increase, but the way we're going about it.
Our largest user will pay thirty eight thousand dollars more next year, based on this proposal.
How much does he pay now? Couple million? Yeah, couple million.
Well, we've talked about this for months and months and months, and while you all have some concerns, it seems like every time we get close to a serious vote, then they come up.
I think we're going to have a serious vote here.
I want to take issue with that. My, my email goes back to June. The last one went out Thursday. I received zero response from the administration, I stand by that. I can give you the dates if you're feeling just a hold.
Nobody wants to raise rates, not one of us here wants to raise rates. Council in two thousand and eleven got a cost of service analysis that they opted to do absolutely nothing on. They knew rates were going up then, we know rates are going up now. This may not be the world's most perfect plan, but we have to do something.
You know, there is other alternatives, we can't be like Washington DC and just keep bending ourselves into oblivion. Washington's up there right now with a seventeen trillion plus debt, and they're just printing money as fast as they can print it. We may have to look at situations and start cutting back some places, instead of just continuing going to the people.
I hear that on a regular basis, without any specific suggestions where a cut's going to come from. Uh, it's easy to say that you're spending too much money, but we have fewer people now working for the city of Lebanon than we did back years ago. Uh, I, I don't know where the cut is going to come.
I can tell you where, Mr. Mayor, we have fewer people working in water, sewer, electric, and roads than we do in City Hall. City Hall's up about twenty percent, the rest of our workforce is down.
Perhaps, but not since I came here, because we're, we have one fewer people, person in City Hall than we did when I first sat down in this chair.
But, uh, just, just to make a point, we're talking about the electric fund, fund eight zero. That's, we can, i- if you have a fundamental discussion of, of overall city, and I think we confuse the citizens when we talk about, there is no correlation between tax money and fund twenty two and the electric expense, those two expenses aren't even the same. As I went through today, today, we have spent four point two million dollars in two months in the electric fund. Three point eight of that is for the cost of power. So that means we have spent roughly.
Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand, okay? Hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty of that is our franchise tax. That's going to be debated in this town as long as, as long as all of us live here is my guess, okay? So, you break that down, we pay twenty thousand in insurance, just our, keeping our vehicles, our policies with twenty thousand, right? So that's a hundred and forty, so take that off. So when you get down to it, and I did, and I don't have those numbers in front of me, but you take that down, and we spend, we spent ninety three thousand dollars a month in the last two months on just germane operations. I did not compare that to police and fire, because those are similar, they're similar units, right? But ninety three thousand dollars on a three million dollar deficit, I can eliminate every employee, I cannot buy another piece of equipment, and I can let the lines not be maintained, and we're still going to only save ninety three thousand dollars a month. So this idea that we're going to have to tighten the valves, and in the other comments, and I'm probably, but, run it like a household, we're one point six million dollars overdrawn on our checkbook. So, I've identified the problem, it's whatever you guys want to do to, to solve it, that's, you, I need direction.
And the suggestion was made that we compare ourselves to the federal government, which is seventeen trillion dollars in debt. And what we're trying to avoid is following that path. So, if we do nothing, we will be, that, those reserves that we've talked about will be decreased next year by about two million dollars. And every year thereafter until we decide to do what needs to be done. Anybody else?
Could I have a roll call, please?
Wheeler?
Oh.
Herney?
Yes, with a comment. Um, I think personally, this will affect me most of everybody that's up here, but for the whole city, it will affect us worse if we don't do it now because sooner or later, we're going to have a hole so big we won't be able to get up. So, with regret, I say yes.
I think it's a mixed characterization to say that I want to operate in the red. I think there are better ways to fund it, no.
Crabtree?
No.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor?
And the results are?
Four, four.
And the mayor votes yes. And that will move Council Bill forty oh nine forward for second reading two weeks from tonight. Council Bill forty oh, forty ten is an attempt to answer a request by Mr. Elmore that, uh, it be put in our code that appraisals of property will be made before they're sold. Which makes sense because we wouldn't do a thing like that with the property of any significance anyway. But, it doesn't hurt to have it codified, so that's what forty ten is about. And I'd like to have a motion. Most approved.
Councilman Herney?
Discussion comment?
So this, but just so I'm clear, anytime we are to sell a piece of property, we will have a published appraisal in advance?
All these things, it, but that will be the guided section, um, that J is what the procedure administratively will follow when we talk about the disposition of real property. And that will be, that will be bound by.
Any questions?
Yes. Let him down, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Would you?
Let me know when.
Keep going. Keep going. Keep going. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
I have a serious problem with subsection B, I, I, I. If that's not a good old boy paragraph, I've never seen one. And I would move that that be amended by removing that paragraph.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
I would second that.
Can you explain that? What, what, what you meant by that?
Yeah, so, oh, I mean, I mean, I can, it, this is very standard municipal language. Um, I mean, and again, that's not tied to anything, but what it does is if somebody comes to the city that has a. If, if the city happens to be in a, um, uh, say, property assemblage, right? So let's look at Old Town for like a residential lot. Like we've got a couple of places where we have a couple of residential lots that are together and, and, and an idea. And so if someone says, look, I'm wanting to assemble these four parcels together so that I can replat that and put it into a larger lot and then build a house on it. Then it allows us that we've identified, so i- in order, if we just have one and two, then though, we're bound by those. To where here, we can come to council and say, property Bob has these two parcels. We own the other two parcels. He's wanting to assemble them together. We're gonna go get an appraisal, agree to a fair market price and then allow for Bob to put those four together. And he has a vested interest in the assemblage of those four parcels to where if Bob comes to us. And he says, I'd like to buy those from the city so I can put them together, then we said, we'll have to say, no, we can't. You either have to put, we have to decide to go for an RFP or, um, we actually have to sell them on the open market. So there are times where it just, a, a series of unique circumstances come together. That says the on, the only potential owner or buyer is somebody that's got an interest in the reason we would sell it. And so, so that being said, but in order, even if we went to that, we'd still have to go through the provisions above. Which essentially says that we'll have, we, it has no purpose for the city. It has, and so there is protection for what it's worth. There is protection up here because you, the first thing a council has to do is a property. Property may only be considered for sale upon the determination of city council that there is no current or future municipal need for that property. So if the council is a body, so this all end, I mean, if, if, if the council's body says, there's a potential need for that. Oh, we'd like to hold that for a p- potential park expansion. And so if that declarative statement isn't made, then the things in the bottom doesn't matter. But there's, there are, are times where folks will come to the city, um, and say, I'd like to buy, and who knows how we acquired it? I mean, we could have acquired it in a multitude of ways and it's just ultimately, I mean, we have seven hundred and some odd parcels around town. I think it's seven hundred, isn't it? Yeah, something like that. Parcels around town, predominantly, most of them are residential parcels that. We've just acquired over time for one reason or another. So this anyways, it just gives the flexibility to allow, if there's a unique circumstance. To, to allow the council not bound it by RFP or, but it's the body as a whole. It's no individuals. It's a body as a whole.
What, but what is wrong with appraisal on that?
Oh, it, it still require appraisal. Oh, it absolutely, it, 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 no, it, this is just mean, this is just modes of disposition. Even if Bob came to us, even if Bob came to us under that scenario, on this right here, first, you have to consider it, there's no need to it. Secondly, prior to the sale, we'd have to obtain an appraisal. We'd have to make sure that it's properly platted. Now, if it's properly platted into two lots, we could convey both of those lots.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it does, it's just, these are three modes of disposition. And like I said, this is standard municipal language and it does allow for unique circumstances. And that's the only reason we put it in there is for flexibility.
And offers options.
Oh, yeah, you'd still have to approve everything. I mean, council did not, yeah.
Any other questions?
So if it's still all got, gotta be approved by council, why do you have to have that in there to begin with?
This, this is a.
You've lost me somewhere, I'm sorry.
That's, well, so this is a policy. A lot of, we don't have a policy on how we just dispose of real estate. So this is three methods or mode at which we can dispose of, of property. We don't have, we currently don't have any methods, so.
But what I'm saying is why do we need that, the third one, I, I, I?
Because if you, if lack of that, then if you come and say, hey, I've got Bob, so let's play the good old boy system. Hey, I got Bob that wants to assemble these, how hard can it be? I'm gonna say, you gotta, we gotta, first off, we gotta do a declarative statement, then we have to do all of that. And the only means, we can never sell it individually to Bob, even though Bob's the only one's got the best interest of the property. Because we either have to RFP it, means we have to request proposals from anybody. That's what two is.
So if somebody else bought it, it's no big deal, right?
Well, but if Bob, my, my story was that Bob owned the two adjacent lots and he was assembling. Say there's two fifty footers on once, on, in one half, right? And it was subdivided and we happened to grab the other half legally or illegally. And he's wanting to put all four of those fifty by one hundred lots together to make a fifty by two hundred or fifty by one hundred lot. So he could build a house on it under current regulations. If we don't leave that third one in, then the only option we can do is we have to go through the procedure of putting a force sale sign in there. And sell it to anybody that wants to buy it. So I'm, I'm just putting flexibility in. I mean, it's, I'm just putting flexibility in that it allows for if there is a unique situation. And remember, a majority of this body and future bodies would have to deter, would have to say, no, we want to dispose of this property this way. I mean, so it's not, this is how we're gonna dispose of it. These are three options. Why would you not want? I mean, let's just go back to the electric discussion we just had.
Can we go back to the, the language?
No, let's, we're on this. Let's don't go back to the.
I, the last sentence doesn't bother me. I, I, I can, I think that's fine. If, there's no sense complicating matters for a, a small size to adjacent property owners. That's what you're implying. I support that. It, it's applying that to something other than that that I, I think is, is just right for potential insider trading. And I, I, I can never support that.
I don't, I don't know where it's differentiating between the two. It's a negotiated sale would be a negotiated sale from the governing body to the buyer. It doesn't, it, it doesn't, it doesn't differentiate.
But your language doesn't limit it to that. That's the example that you're using, but that's not what your language says.
That, that's standard municipal language.
And it offers, simply offers options.
I mean, it's just opt, it's just flexibility. I mean, you, you don't wanna be flexible, just take it out. I mean, it's, I mean, but, but then when we have an, an opportunity for a negotiated sale and I'll say, well, you can't, you gotta go through an RFP. I mean, or you have to do a subject listing. I mean, that just doesn't.
But this wouldn't have to be.
Change also to only.
This wouldn't have to necessarily apply to small size to adjacent properties with it.
I've written this.
What's, what's considered a small size? But that's where I'm going. It doesn't, I mean, how can you determine it's a small size? It says small size, but what is a small size? Acre, two acres?
I mean, that's, that's really for, uh, future councils to decide when they, when they want a menu of how to dispose of a property. I mean, this is not, this is binding your choices, not binding your s- the sale. I mean, this is just, I mean, if you guys don't want flexibility, then I, I mean.
Well, my idea of the appraisal was to protect the sale of the properties, the people's property in City Lebanon.
That's, but that's up here. That's up here. No matter how you dispose of it, no matter what mode of disposition you use. You still have to require all of those. That's all binding. So don't confuse the mode versus what you gotta do to get rid of those. So I, you guys can lock it down as tight as you want. You can say, we only do competitive bids. That's the only way we ever get rid of property. You can be that restrictive. I didn't think that.
I would like to see it all go to the highest bidder, I think. You know, I think that's the way it'll be. I may be wrong, I may be wrong. That's.
Well, I understand what he is saying because this very same thing happened when we basically rebuilt original Lebanon, as you call it, Old Town.
Sure.
We put lots together. We bought up lots and we put them together.
Very common.
And we, this is exactly what happened.
This, I mean, I didn't have any intent when I wrote this other than allow flexibility for the governing, this governing body and future governing bodies. I mean, this is.
The only thing I can get up, hung up on is, is the small, uh, the wording is not defined. What is small? Small in Montana, you know, or Alaska is totally different than small here.
Small on Jefferson.
Small on Jefferson is totally different than small out here someplace else.
Mr. Mayor, I had made an amendment. I would amend my amendment in the next to the last line to take out the word also. And substitute the word only. And, and leave the rest in.
You'll leave the small size in there or take it out too while you're at it?
Yeah, no, I'll, I'll leave the, just, just change one, one word on the next to the last line and I'll.
This method can only be used in the sale of properties of small size.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Explain again what you were doing.
This method can only be used in the sale of properties of small size to adjacent property owners.
Okay.
Okay. If you're good with it, uh.
You ex, you seconded his, uh. You're, we're not going to define small, is that correct? About that big, about that big.
Can we just delete that altogether?
If you're gonna do only.
De- defined or eliminated?
If it's only is small, uh, small enough that it can't be built on without other property is small, you know, what is small?
Do we need to define small or just take that out? Which would be a better way to go?
No.
If we're, if we're limited, if we're using only and we're using small, then only and small, small has to be defined.
But can we take small out and not have to do anything? Leave the only without the small?
Can you just take out only and all adjacent properties?
Only adjacent properties. Yeah, I'm sorry if you guys flexibility. I, I, I thought, I didn't realize it would be a big.
A property worth less than twenty-five thousand.
I think it has to be limited.
Well, it's, it's important, it's important. Not just for us, but for the future councils, that's where I'm being.
I think it has to be limited to the examples that you were giving.
What, I'll, what about twenty-five thousand dollars? Properties, you know, sold under twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm just throwing out a number to, a little bit low.
We can't, you can't choose that mode, but.
What if property values go up or down?
You can't, yeah, and you can't choose that mode and then get an appraisal. I mean.
Inflation's gonna.
Well, we can change it.
Can you say like, first say that property that is too small to be built on? That is a.
Then if you're playing the zoning regulations, I mean, that would be one way to tackle it.
I just think you need some definition.
Yeah, or small.
Can you reword it in the whole thing?
This method can only be used in the sale of lots.
Are you, are you guys?
Which are not.
Which do not make the.
Are you guys, I mean, are, are you guys wanting it to absolutely restrict it to, um, adjacent properties with lot assemblage? Because if you're gonna do that, then that's how I would take this is, a negotiated sale can only be used for lot assemblage. That's well defined in all of our planning and zoning regulations. And then the lot assemblage.
Well, that's what the state.
That's basically what we're saying.
No, it just says small size to adjacent properties. I'm saying you can say, this method can only be used for the sale of properties for lot assemblage.
Only if you're gonna put two or more together.
Yeah, for lot assemblage, that's, if that's.
That works.
Does that work?
That would work.
If that, if that is, if you're talking about lot assemblage is the only time you wanna use that method. Then we can just use the word lot assemblage because that's well defined in our planning and zoning.
Oh, okay.
But then it doesn't have value or size if it has to be assembling something. So, but that's still very restricted.
If, under that scenario, couldn't we be selling a five acre tract to somebody that already owns a five acre tract?
No.
Sure, but if you need.
But if, if it's restricted, the sale is a lot that, that's.
But if you need a twenty acre parcel for a big box and we're the adjacent property owner, we got a five acre, acre tract. Again, I, I go back to, I was trying to allow for sec, for flexibility. A big box is gonna be a twenty acre, is gonna be a twenty acre site, seventeen to twenty acres.
That's exactly what I'm trying to get away from because at this point, we're helping some, one good old boy at the expense of, of somebody else that might.
But if he owns, but if he, but, but let's think about that from the public's perspective. If he owns the adjacent property, why would we sell it to Bob? And then Bob's just gonna turn around and sell it to the guy that needs it.
But the first, the first rule of fair market value appraisal is the, an adjoining landowner will pay more for something than, than someone off the street.
But we're.
So you're, you're making him a sweetheart deal, which is what I'm against.
But, okay. But we're also a municipal government wanting to foster development, so.
No, we're not. We're in the municipal government trying to maximize the value of property we're disposing of.
Some, sometimes, but not always. I mean, sometimes the sales tax, if, if it's.
For economic.
If for, if, if a big box comes to town and says, I need this five acres and the city owns one of it, then we're gonna sell it to somebody so the big box can count.
A while ago, when you was talking about only for assembly, to put two lots together that were too small to build on. That's what I, I thought it was because those two lots were too small.
Well, that would be, that would be.
Well, how, what is the minimum? It's like a hundred feet by, what, what is the minimum?
Okay. On a residential, it's a twenty thousand square acre parcel, isn't it?
Twelve thousand feet.
So, but yeah, if you're talking just residential.
Well, that what you were talking, I thought that's what we were talking.
I was saying property assemblage because of my example.
But it could, it could apply to a business, yeah, a large commercial might need some property.
It can be a large commercial lot.
I'm saying that if somebody, if, yeah, if, if a, if, if something came into town.
Large business.
Large business, big box, and says, I need seventeen acres. And we happen to be one of the property owners that is there. So even if we don't sell it to the adjacent property, say we sell it to the developer who's bringing that box in. Again, that's a unique situation that we would do a negotiation for the assemblage of parcels. I mean, I mean, I can go through every scenario in the book.
Well, if it's. But if it's a large commercial for a big box store, it's gonna be high dollar property. Then you would just get an appraisal, wouldn't you?
Well, you're gonna have appraisal, wouldn't you?
You're gonna get the appraisal anyway.
Well, I'm just saying though, you would get an appraisal and then the council would set a price.
That's incorrect. If you, that's what, okay, what I'm trying to tell you is if you take that idea three out. Your only option, council's only option is to do an RFP or to list the property. So what I'm, that's, you and I are on the same page Dennis on what we're saying. You, the negotiated sale would mean that somebody has a vested interest. You're assembling of property for something and this gives the council the ability to negotiate directly with whoever has a vested interest. Whether it's the big box or an adjacent property owner. So all I'm saying is if you put in three, that it can only be done through assembling property. Doesn't matter if it's a five acre tract or a tenth acre tract of real property. Then if it's assemblage, then we can use this negotiated method. And we will use the negotiate, the negotiation of s- sale based on the stuff you gotta, it's gotta be planted, it's gotta be, that's, everything, those things up for a buck. So you just said exactly what I'm trying to allow you to do.
But I was speaking previously of smaller, like residential type lots. That's what I had in mind.
Sure.
If it's, if it's a, a high dollar lot out here on a busy freeway, why wouldn't you just take the highest bid? Get an appraisal and then take the highest bid from there? If it's, if it's a, a high dollar lot out here on a busy freeway, why wouldn't you just take the highest bid, get an appraisal and then take the highest bid from that?
So what if somebody was wanting to stop Target for coming in? And they paid the most amount of money to stop a big box coming in and they were the highest bidder, is that who you'd wanna sell it to?
Well, we're trying to sell a piece of property for a-
But your sales tax over the next fifty years would make a lot of difference.
I mean, I mean Walmart faces that all the time.
And employment.
Yeah.
And so all I'm saying is, I mean, that exactly what happened, that's what happened in Ellisville. Yeah, I mean, I mean, so if, it doesn't matter, I ju- I don't have an opinion, I'm just trying to educate here that having the ability to negotiate with you under unique cir- circumstances is an authority I think you guys are gonna want in the future. If you wanna limit that authority to this body and other bodies to be re- related to lot assemblage, then I think we can put that link, we can strike out the sale of property to the small size to adjacent property owners and just say, this method can only be used when in the sale of property assemblage. And then that is the limit at which that authority can be used.
This thing smacks, uh, favoritism and, and negotiations behind closed doors, outside of the sunshine law, so that somebody gets a benefit and somebody gets hurt at the expense of the public treasury. It is wrong.
Can you explain how that's gonna be?
Because somebody's gonna come in here and say, gee, I can do something. I can start homeland or whatever that thing was down there in the Allen Building. And all I want you to do is give me this piece of property and I've got all these grandiose plans. And two years later it fails. We don't need to be making closed door deals.
But, Randy, you as the-
We don't need to make closed door deals. That's what this is.
You as the council? Council has to approve all of this. This is, it, it doesn't, I mean, the vote is of, of the body, so the, the body can decide what you-
But we're making a closed door deal that nobody else in town knows about, has an opportunity to be involved in.
That's not necessarily true. A council-
That's what it says.
No, it doesn't.
It, it could be, your potential was there for, for a-
The negotiated sale could be a public negotiation at, at the dais, or it could be in a closed session under real estate. It, there's no, I mean, it doesn't, the negotiation is between the governing body and the affected end user. I mean, it, I, I don't care, it just-
Which is why you do it in closed session, and we've done it for years in closed sessions, so that the negotiations aren't made public until we're ready to vote on it.
Actually, actually, the negotiations are not done behind closed doors.
Well, not the go to your right. We, we hear about it.
They are not. And that's a problem I have. That's one of the reasons I brought this forward. That is a problem I have. And on the original request, I asked that, you know, someone on council or committee, someone could sit in, not negotiate, but sit in on negotiations. And I'm told that that can't happen. Again, I'm gonna ask why that can't happen.
Well, what I understood your request to be was that you participated in negotiations. I don't care if, if a council member happens, chooses to be there while negotiations are going on.
I think there should always be a council or somebody, somebody.
But the mayor is, I mean, the mayor's the representative.
Pardon?
The mayor's the representative. I mean, he's, he's part of the legislative body.
And we, we get to-
Well, he's not been with you on some of those negotiations.
He's not really been. I mean, he's been on every one, every discussion. But I mean, now we're, I mean-
It comes back to us either way, anyway it goes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well, it comes back for approval is right.
Yeah, we can approve it, we, if we don't like it, turn it down.
Well-
Yep, oh, sorry. I don't know where we are.
Would, would, yeah, please tell us exactly where we are right now.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the first reading. Then, um, Councilman Suter and Councilman Elmore amended the, or made a motion to amend the bill to remove section B IIII. And then, um, Councilman Suter made a motion to amend his original motion to, um, place the word only in the paragraph for the word also. And there is no second on that motion at this time.
I thought, Mr. Elmore seconded the original and he accepted the substitute.
He, he, he did. Did you?
No, but I will if it's necessary, I mean, if that's what-
But then that's what we just came in.
Yeah.
But I thought that's where we decided. We were having a problem with the word size.
We need that made in here.
Sure, I would understand that idea too. I think only without defining what small size is applicable in that direction.
And so then that's when I said, this method can only be used in the sale of property assemblage.
But it's property assemblage gives no definition other than two or more properties going together. It could be-
That's correct. That's absolutely correct.
So that kinda takes away the meaning that I think Mr. Suter was trying to accomplish. So... You wanna try and define the word small?
I think that council, when they dealt with a proposal, could define small. No, I'm sorry.
Well, Chris said we couldn't leave it that way. Mister Allen said we should not leave it that way.
I, I don't- I don't like, it's pretty arbitrary. It's, uh, you know, I think it'd be problematic for you all down the road.
What would Chris say again?
Small, I think small is pretty arbitrary for you.
Small, oh, I do too. Yeah, I do too.
Cause your problems down the road. I agree with that.
Right, I agree.
From where I'm-
Yes.
I would use the word only.
So you, neither use also or only is what he's, I believe that's what he's saying.
Can you just strike small size? Do we have to?
Yeah, you could. I mean, that gets back to assembl- I would use the word assemblage versus adjacent property owners. So, because it, there might be a time you don't sell to an adjacent property owner, you'd sell to an end user.
The only hangup I have is that word small, small.
Randy, you're the property guy. Up, up here, where are we at here? Tell, tell me.
I mean, here's the thing.
Come on with something, Randy.
We can put, we can put assemblage and then come back two weeks from now. This is just a perfect three.
Does it work to, to use a dollar value, Mister Allen?
Is the property as-
Well, we can amend it.
Yeah, it can always be amended.
Yeah.
But it takes-
As good as we keep up with things. As good as we can with things.
Slow things down.
Yeah, we can slow things down.
But-
I have a little hangup with the dollar value.
Why?
Cause it changes so much from year to year.
Everything changes. It's changing, everything changes.
Uh, oh, everything's gonna change.
If we're trying to get rid of a small tract, this is an expedient way to do it. Say under twenty-five thousand dollars. If somebody's trying to put together a major tract, it's not gonna happen overnight. Those things take several months to put together.
Okay, just to clarify what you just said, if you amend this, that is not an option for us to use?
For a big tract.
Yeah, for each, I mean, so the only-
That's fine. That, that's what I want.
So the only other two options is to put it up for RFP, which a non-interested party could, conceivably get, or to put it for sale at which an interested party, so if you don't want us to ever be able to talk to an interested party-
I think that could potentially hurt economic development, so I'm kinda leery about limiting that.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get at. I mean, I'm not-
I think the potential for abuse vastly outweighs the potential for advantage.
But you guys are-
You all, the only comment I would add is, is I understand that you all don't have a policy right now, so you can kinda do footloose and fancy free, whatever you want to do sale wise. To my knowledge, it's not been a problem with no guidance in the past, and not that I'm aware of. And again, it boils down to the governing body.
I would like to see some bill voted approved tonight.
I think it is better for you all to have a policy. I didn't mean it that way, but what I'm saying is you, this body and other bodies have operated a long time with no policy. To my knowledge, it's probably been a good old boy or otherwise.
I mean, land is, uh, I don't know what direction you're looking for me, but the word land assemblage, and let the governing bodies of the future decide whether it's important enough of a project or large enough or small enough, whether they wanna use that option. And I may have, no councils may never wanna use that option. I mean, but at least it's, I mean, if we use land assemblage, it gives them flexibility.
Can we just make it properties to adjacent property owners?
But the example I, the example I gave is if Target came to us.
Could be more than two. That's why his land assemblage-
I, I understand.
Yeah, so if, if Target came to us, we, we want to, or a develop, really Target never come to us, a developer representing Target would come to us.
Sure.
So would we, I mean, but they currently don't own any adjacent property, so therefore we could not use that if the word adjacent property owner is our only guidance. So it would limit us to even have conversations with the developer that was representing Target to, I mean, but, and again, guys, fundamentally, to Chris's point, we have no policy, but you have to remember, before we can even decide a method of disposition, council has to determine there is no current or future municipal need. So you guys have to answer that question first and foremost. So then you say, you have to say, do we need it? Is it? So that's step one. Step two is, does it have a current appraisal? Is it planted? Um, do we have deed to the property? I, any problems with it? Any right of way issues? Answer all those questions. Make sure there's no debt on it. Then, the last part is, okay, how do we want to dispose of it? So you've still got a three step process on what you're talking about. So if you did, and that's why I'm separating all three of those sec- segments. If you guys never make a determination, we don't ever have to, we never just worry about how we're gonna dispose of it. So that's a fundamental question first and foremost, is you guys have to say, no, you know what? This prob- this property has no value to us. Cause if it has any value to us, then we're gonna keep it. That's why we have seven hundred parcels of land. So, and I think most, the most of the time that would be used, so that's, so three's gonna be used in generally the two cases I gave. Assemblage for rental property. And when we're a vested property owner and a large scale development that's going to transform for whatever development is occurring, and we're gonna wanna give that, sell that to the developer that's going to put the project together. And I'm trying to even think of one where we own a piece of property that that would exist now. But why do we care? And I mean, so, I mean, maybe like the-
So-
Go ahead.
Can we just make a decision and then we can kinda sleep on it? I mean, this is just the first reading and then we can make it.
Well-
Sure. Sure.
Go ahead and, and once more, tell us where we are right now.
Basically, we have an amendment, a motion to amend, um, section B triple I to, um, change the word also to only. And that was made by Councilman Suter, and I do not have a second on the floor for that.
That's what can only be used in the sale of properties of small size to adjacent property owners. Well, if that's the motion, I'll second it.
Hernie?
Yeah.
Was voting on the amendment?
On the amendment. Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
No.
Mitchell?
No.
Mather?
No.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Wheeler?
No.
Motion failed.
Now, can we have a vote on the original?
Yes.
This is as it is now.
As it's written. As it's written right now.
As it's written. And let's see. That begins with you, Mister Suter.
This method can also be used in the sale of-
No.
Crabtree?
No.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
No.
Hernie?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
There you go.
Well, that was the last one, wasn't it?
That was, that was the last one.
Are we not trying, are we not?
But, you're going to get an opportunity to talk.
Nope.
There being no old business, we'll move to comments and start with staff. Chief. Chief.
Yeah, I just, uh, I had two employees, uh, last week who, the fire department requested to go to, uh, I believe it was the Methodist Church, it had been a food drive, they were passing out food here and now. And, uh, they asked us to come over because last time they did this in the east, and several people actually passed out. So they asked us to be on standby. Uh, my crew went over there and arrived early and took it on themselves to start helping prepare the food for dispersal and then, uh, helped a couple hundred people carry food baskets to their car from the, from the church and everything. That was Cody decorated the MRA, and, uh, I just love that with pretty fast household services, but I didn't want to sell.
I'd suggest that you make that, to, known to Ms. Milliken and ask her to put it in the personal op. Chris?
Okay, uh, a few items. Number one, offices will be closed Monday for Labor Day, just so everybody gets that out. Uh, number two, I hope you guys are, uh, looking, uh, saw the water tower with the image that was voted on Facebook. Um, I think that is a nice addition to Elm Street and Route sixty-six, and so I hope you guys do appreciate that. And the last thing, and you'll, uh, start getting notifications, cause I've already signed you all up, uh, to follow me, but I have started a blog that I'm going to blog about city business. And so, uh, right now I have nine followers, followers, and it just happened to be all nine of you guys. So, uh, the first thing I put up was the look ahead so that all our citizens can kinda see, you know, kinda have a summary of the bills and so forth. So that's something that I'm going to, uh, start doing a lot more often. And so I think you'll, um, see, uh, uh, some positive effects from that hopefully. So, um, and anybody can go to our website and sign up and they, uh, Mayor has one, I have one, and there's some others that, uh, I think, uh, Fire Chief has one, Police Chief has one. So those are things that, uh, as, that you can get notified when they put stuff on the website and stuff. All right? So that, do you have any questions for me? All right, nope.
Work session?
Uh, the, September fourth, six o'clock. That's first Thursday and, so-
And the subject?
Uh, I'll probably just go, I'll, I'll probably just go with what was, uh, slated for the August one, which in my mind, the two biggest items, Devin credit and service, uh, or service agreements. That's something I think needs some clarification so that we can decide what we're gonna do in that direction. So that's something that I told you would be, so those are gonna, I'm gonna limit to those two items and go from there. Unless somebody wants something that pending, but I think those are two large pending items. So, that's all I got.
Any other questions? That brings us to council. See, I told you, you can talk some more.
Thank you. Are we going to address that word small in the second reading? I mean, with it, I don't think he had an issue as long as it was also was one of his only. Chris?
I, I'm glad to have some corrections as far as what, what I need to do. I can visualize this.
Maybe we can get some op- some optional wording.
I can do that.
Yeah, work on, work on some options that we can discuss.
Yeah. You betcha. I think we'd feel better, wouldn't we? Okay. With the optional wording.
Yeah, plus don't read it.
Okay, that's it.
Chuck?
It's on the backside of the tower and it looked good. I haven't been seeing the front side yet. Looking, looking good.
Thanks then.
Dennis?
I'm done.
Well, we have a challenge on the table, people.
Well, we have a challenge on the table, people. Ice, water, ice bucket challenge, so.
That's all right.
Are we gonna do it as a group or are we gonna all do it individually or?
I almost had it, I almost had it that would, that would, as we're walking out tonight, a little truck hit us, but I didn't, I didn't know that would've been-
Might've given us a heart attack. Can you help us out, Sam?
That would not be a good thing.
Cause that'd worked out well for the last fire department. Yeah, that one.
I, I, you know, I didn't have a speaker.
Or first of all, I mean, we pretty much have to accept the challenge.
I, I, Lena has-
I intend to.
If you want to accept the challenge, you can do it.
I will accept the challenge.
I'll, I'll check.
Lena has accepted the challenge, I intend to accept the challenge, I will, I will notify, and I intend to accept the challenge here at City Hall. And so, I will notify you when that challenge will be accepted. If anybody would like to join me, I will make sure that it is a convenient time that everybody can make it.
What do you pay?
I'm sure I'd like to know.
How much do you pay?
How much am I gonna pay?
Ten dollars.
Yeah, for us to come there and do that.
Oh, I, I mean, I think we should make, I think we should make a collective, uh, donation is my thought.
We, we have to pay to stay dry.
You pay a lot more, stay dry, you pay ten bucks and get ice water dumped on you. And that has something like that.
Yeah, so, I, you know what, you'll probably learn about it in the blog.
I made the, I'll tell you what.
I'll pay on that here right now, I was talking about it.
Randy?
Date, notify everybody they can show up.
Esther?
All right, I'll do it. It's a second on my day.
I already said to your challenge, I, I sent you an email.
Yeah, thanks, John.
But I'd do it, I would do it again if everybody would do it, I'd do it again.
You can throw the ice at him after you're done.
But I did, I did have a couple of comments, and I know, Richard hates me already.
Striping.
I, I will say, we have our first home ballgame, and I know it's not your department, but, right, unless it was mowed today, after seven thirty.
Oh, I know, I agree.
It looks terrible, and that's gonna be the first thing you see, is you, I mean, the road looks great, the, the-
Can you let me talk a little bit?
Uh-huh.
Can you let me talk a little bit?
But will someone know it?
I sent a work order out last week to have it mowed, I've been work-
Okay, it's not mowed yet.
I sent a work order out, I can't, I mean, it's all I can do. I, I've been, I've been working with, uh, Mr. Lowry over there on the banners. He's ordering banners to get up.
The high school looks great.
So.
They keep theirs mowed.
I'm, I sent the work order out, that's all I can do.
All right, and then, um, and then, um, I, and I, I already talked to administration about this because I hate finding out things on the internet, especially on Facebook. And Jeffrey, I am sorry that I didn't know you were leaving us prior to reading it as a help wanted, and I really appreciate you and everything you've done, and I wish you well when you do leave us.
Amen.
Cause you've been an asset to the community and especially to us as a board.
Same, yeah, ditto.
And second, um, when his wife posted pictures, is when I saw the Kevin Reed Tyrant party already was held. And I'm sorry we weren't invited because I would've taken my lunchtime to come. Um, I think we need to know about those milestones in our, in our community. Um, I felt terrible, I don't think any councilperson went to, thirty-seven years of working here, I think we should've been invited. And then the last thing was, um, I, I'm sorry I wasn't here at the work session on Monday night, I, I do have a job, but I had to be there. Um, but, I'm the, I'm the city secretary, to your appointment, that I agree, that's a lot of money to be spending for something I can't even afford to be a member of. Um, um, I, I won't say I would've voted no, but I would've voted no. Um, because I can't even afford the monthly fees to be a member of it, and use it, and they're spending tax money on it. Thank you for your comments earlier tonight. That's all.
All right, now we'll move to the mayor. Uh, some years ago, these sessions used to be televised on a regular basis by a volunteer that worked for the city. About a year ago, I started talking to Eric Adams from the media department at the high school with the aim being that we restart that process. He and I have been in frequent conversation during the last two weeks, and today it all came together. All of this has been televised as we speak and will be in the future. Tonight, it was streamed live onto YouTube, and tomorrow, or in, at least in the very few near future, will be available on Facebook. So, anyone here, or anyone that isn't here, can see these proceedings if they want to. I want to thank Mr. Adams very much, and Jared Schumaker from our department for facilitating all of this. And I think that from now, for the foreseeable future, we can expect that they'll be televised and that they will be available hopefully on the community channel, though there are technological hurdles to overcome right now. But, thank you very much, guys. I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved.
Hi.
Motion approved, yeah.
Okay.